Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's Meeting for October 25, 2021, back to order. We started tonight's meeting at 5:45 in executive session where we discussed some union issues, a legal issue, and land acquisition or sale. No decisions were made. We took things under advisement.
We'll talk to you.
Gotcha. And more to follow on that. So with that, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just for all.
With tonight's crowd, we are able to have six-foot distance, so if masks want to be removed, they can be removed. If you're uncomfortable and want to move to a separate part of the room with people around you without a mask, you're welcome to do so. Public comment announcement. Anyone for public comment announcement? Joe?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is just a follow-up to the announcement that was broadcast last Friday. Just a reminder that the town of Harwich tomorrow, Tuesday, October 26, is conducting a free COVID-19 testing clinic. But again, as was stated, this clinic is intended for anyone who attended the Harwich Special Town Meeting and who wishes to be tested based on the fact that the town was aware of a symptomatic person being present at town meeting. Again, I will emphasize that close contacts were already informed. We have gotten questions from the public about how we know, and we were able to rely upon information from the symptomatic person as well as the individuals around that person and also matching up with video and the attendance sheets that were provided at town meeting. Again, if anybody is still concerned and they were there, whether they're symptomatic or not, they're encouraged to go to the Harwich Public Safety Building at 175 Sisson Road. Again, this is tomorrow, October 26, from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. It's behind the Public Safety Building. No appointment necessary, no prescription needed. It is drive-through testing, and if any questions, please contact Administration. And we are at 508-430-7513. And as I stated last week in my message, we understand that the risks are extremely low, given the protective measures that everybody took last week at town meeting, as well as the extraordinary measures the town took through our Health Department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Good evening. Amy Usowski, Conservation Administrator. I just want to let the town know that on Thursday, November 4, the Barnstable County Drill Team is going to be having a search and rescue drill at Thompson's Field Conservation Area from 8:00 a.m. to approximately 3:00 p.m. We are going to be putting it on the Facebook page, as well as the Town of Harwich Police page, as well as posting it at the field. So again, it is only a drill. It's a search and rescue drill. We just ask that the public kind of go about their own normal business there, so.
Bug walk.
Yes. Any questions, they can contact the Fire Department.
Can you repeat the date and time of the meeting?
Thursday, November 4 throughout Thompson's Field from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Thank you, Amy. Larry?
Michael, just, I thought Chief LeBlanc might be here, but we did get an email message, I think, yesterday about one of our firemen's special recognition for saving a person in a burning car on Route 6 last year.
Josh Ford.
Extreme amount of Josh Ford. More bravery than I probably would ever show. But I want to be sure that, to mention his name, Josh Ford is nice recognition.
Thank you, Larry.
Sorry. Carolyn Carey, Community Senate Director. I just wanted to remind everyone that Friday at 5:30 is the drive-through Halloween event, and we have been so fortunate to have donations from so many community members. It should be an exciting event, and we look forward to having people come not before 5:30, 5:30 on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to remind everyone, hold on, that we are streaming live on Roku and Apple TV officially, and you can watch back episodes of Selectmen's Meetings, Conservation, Council on Aging on both of those platforms. Caleb and I also started a new initiative on the website. When you're looking for minutes, you can see the minutes on the town website, and right below, there's a link that will bring you directly to the audio and video file, so you can read the minutes and watch along while you read them. We're just going back through this calendar year, and we're taking it committee by committee. Usually, the people that have their minutes up to date, we're starting with them first. So you can do Voter Information Committee, Council on Aging, Conservation, and a couple more. Some are not all there, because, as you know, we're not covering every single meeting, but we'll keep working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Anyone else? Consent agenda, please.
I move that we vote to approve the consent agenda with four items. First is to vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for February 3, 2020. Second is to approve an owner's local initiative program refinance request for their home at 5 Stevens Way. Third is to approve a Caleb Chase request in the amount of $1,000. And fourth is to approve a second Caleb Chase request in the amount of $1,000.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero, Joe?
Thank you.
New business, discussion on departmental revolving funds as related to, we'll do the first one, Independent Auditor Powers and Sullivan Report on the town's revolving funds. Joe, do you want to open that?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize to say earlier. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and members of the public, all present in the room. Mr. Chairman, as you know, the members have been asking, your membership has been asking for an update from the department heads that have a span of control over revolving funds. In anticipation of that, our Finance Director reached out to our auditing firm of Powers and Sullivan for an audit report regarding the review of town revolving funds. So that's item A that is present in your packet. Having read it, I will tell you that it did not find any significant issues, and I think also provides a nice recap of not only the purpose as we see in Chapter 8 of our bylaws, but also spending limits and past year's funds as well. Second from that, we have the Division of Local Services informational guidance, excuse me, guideline release, or what we government geeks like to call the IGR. And they released the IGR number 21-23 in September of this year, and it's timely because it relates to departmental revolving funds. So they don't really talk about the major changes to this. However, when Carol and I became aware of this, we both noticed, and I would draw your attention, in the IGR, Page 7. And Page 7 of the IGR talks about reporting requirements, both an annual report and a town clerk reporting appropriations. And I can tell you that both the Finance Director and I thought this might have been the reason for the new IGR coming out in September of this year, because it talks about an element that we're not, that we were not previously aware. Unfortunately, that's not the case, so if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd read this and tell you that we will be taking appropriate steps in the future to comply. But under the IGR, under Section 5 on Page 7, under reporting requirements, for annual report, it says that a board, department, department or officer having control of a departmental revolving fund is required to submit an annual report on the operation of the fund. In a town, this report must be submitted to the annual town meeting and the Select Board. For each revolving fund, the report must show, number one, the total receipts, and number two, the total expenditures of the fund for the full prior fiscal year and for the first six months of the current fiscal year. Additional reporting requirements may be established by vote of town meeting. So what we will do is, as we have that annual article that talks about reaffirming the revolving funds, and then the second article that talks about setting the spending limits, we'll make sure to alert the moderator, and we'll have those reports referenced at town meeting. And we think that will put us in compliance, an additional step that we're not aware that we're taking presently. And then, last but not least, what you have under item C are the fiscal year 2022 first-quarter departmental revolving fund reports. So as you know, the first quarter ended September 30, and there's a standing policy that within 15 days after, these reports be transmitted. So these departments have met those requirements, and what I've asked the department heads over the past six months is, as we prepare for this deep-dive discussion of the board, that they may want to take a look, and again, this is separate from what we just heard, for reporting requirements. We can incorporate that going forward, but ask the departments to look at, how does your fiscal year '22 first-quarter revolving fund report compare to the last quarter? So that would be fourth quarter fiscal year '21, so quarter over quarter. And then, how does the current fiscal year quarter compare to the previous fiscal year's same quarter, year over year? And then, to really get into a discussion on where the, how the revenues are generated, how they've been expended, and why this is a valuable and necessary tool. I believe that's what we have in front of you this evening, and so I would turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman, for any questions from you and the board, and then turn it over to my colleagues for their presentation of their revolving fund reports.
Thank you, Joe. Don, I'm going to start with you. You've asked for this conversation for the last three years that I'm aware of, and we're finally getting to it, four years, thank you. And we're finally getting to it. Earlier in the year, we brought this up and agreed to withhold it until these reports came in, and here they are. So, Don?
First of all, thank you, both you and the town administrator for doing this. It wasn't just about tracking the generic purpose of the account, because the other thing that was going on was, the prior administration, there wasn't anybody looking at any of these invoices at all. So whereas you had town, the appropriation process, you'd have to wait for money for a year, and then the town meeting happens, you get money, and then you'd have to wait another year to get it. So this was an idea that was implemented 20 years ago to make sure that we could have continuity, and if they needed money right away for that purpose, they could spend it. But it wasn't supposed to be to get out from under any kind of understanding about what particularly was ordered on whatever dates. So it had no oversight. As long as it was generically part of the description of the revolving funds, there was nobody looking at it other than the department itself, which is completely different from appropriated funds, because they would come in, and if a procurement was being made, there would be some oversight over it. So my concern was that, is that, you know, if you, I don't really care if it gets run through the town administrator's office, but there's got to be an accounting each year, not just for equipment, but what kind of equipment, and when was it authorized, and who was it purchased from, that kind of thing, because those things would be known transparently on appropriated funds, but they were not coming forth on these funds, and they're ever-increasing. I can't remember a year where we just decided to go down by 15 or 20 percent. So I mean, it's really something we need to get a handle on.
Thank you, Don. Mary?
No, I found it rather educational. It, revolving funds took me a while, Carol. I recall the first conversation you and I had. I had to go through that one a couple of times to, but this, this helped me to see all the different funds, and what came in and what went out. The more interesting, I thought, part, I thought, was some of John's suggestions on some of the town ones that we may want to look at.
Thank you, Mary. Julie?
Yeah, no, I appreciate the information. I thought it was really helpful, I think, comparing, as, you know, I think Council on Aging pointed out clearly, you know, the impact of the pandemic on various programs and such. I do feel like we get some of this information, though, in the past, when we have presentations, at least when I was on the board, where the breakout was, you know, Eric would go into detail in terms of what programs we're bringing in, which, you know, which monies. I think it's helpful, obviously, in another pair of eyes, to look at it and to see how the money's working, and if there's any kind of revisions. I don't see any other questions, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
No, thank you for this. I agree with some of the points that Don made. We have, in total, over half a million dollars going into revolving funds, and I think we'd all be more comfortable if we had that be more incorporated into our normal procedure of accountability. And I, I think that's, I think that's, that's it for me.
Thank you. With that, Joe, we'll turn it right over to the department heads.
Do you want to go alphabetically, or whichever one wants to speak first?
John's closest.
Get it done with. Yeah, I actually didn't know I was going to be speaking tonight on this, so I'll try to speak from memory. Thanks for having me tonight, John Edman, Planning Director. My memo actually spoke to four funds. Two of them were grant funds, so I'm not going to speak to them tonight, because it seems like the board's interests are the revolving funds. Those revolving funds, which are kind of aligned with planning, are the Albro House Fund and the Sidewalk Fund. The Sidewalk Fund is kind of directly within Planning's wheelhouse. There were no expenditures last year out of, out of either funds. There were some inputs into both funds. The Sidewalk Fund is funded primarily from in lieu, or in lieu fees from subdivisions where the, the permittee did not install sidewalks, but they paid an in lieu fee instead. So that's primarily how the Sidewalk Fund is funded. The Albro House Fund is primarily funded through rentals. What Mary had alluded to is, I made some suggestions about potential different management of those funds, because it struck me that there were no outputs from those funds. You don't necessarily have to spend money, but in my mind, there were things that could have used those funds for, and we didn't. And I think it's just because maybe the, the clunkiness of the management associated with it, and I think in its essence, I resp, I think there's a laudable purpose for, in the case of Albro, having the Planning Director and the Historic District Commission having kind of joint authority over it. In the case of sidewalks, having the planner and the planning board having joint authority. It was supposed to imbue a sort of checks and balances over both funds. But what it instead did was create, those funds aren't all that agile anymore, when these, these funds are things that really should go to operation, your day-to-day operation, maintaining or installing sidewalks, and instead, you have to go through an entire regulatory process to let them go. And truth be told, there really is not that much in either fund. I want to say sidewalks, like 42, and maybe Albro is maybe in the teens somewhere. And then, on top of that, the Albro House, there's also a relationship with, with Carolyn, who's kind of a de facto real estate manager in the town, you know, addition to her, her formal title. So I just want some kind of efficiency with the management of those funds, to get those funds where, really where they need to go and where they'll have the most benefit. You know, in terms of the revolving funds, I've heard some kind of hesitancy about revolving funds because of accountability. I actually was, I remember being on the FinCom at the time where we adopted a couple of these, and I remember the FinCom was really in favor, because every year, you're going to set spending limits. So that accountability goes right to town meeting itself. So just my kind of recollection as a, as a citizen and now a planning director here, I, I actually think there's kind of a good level of accountability associated with those revolving funds, certainly with the ones that the, are associated with planning. So I'm happy to take any questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe. Questions, Don?
No, I'm just an overarching one at the end.
Okay. Mary?
I don't know if we need to take action on the recommendations that John's made. They made sense to me. In a couple of cases, there's two entities in charge of something, and then nobody's in charge. And I thought you had some good recommendations for where it might rightfully fall.
Joe?
So my recommendation would be, as we develop the, as we continue to further develop the warrant for the 2022 annual town meeting and 189 days, that as we get to that article, that would be the appropriate time. So we could have a more in-depth discussion at the board level relative to the article that would impact upon Chapter 8, which is the bylaw, so it'd be a bylaw amendment. And we can talk about those comments, as well as other comments you'll hear tonight, because I have a report at the end for the ADA revolving fund. Spoiler alert, it's never been utilized as it was originally intended back in 2014. So for me, the best way for the board to address that would be under a specific article that's contemplated for town meeting.
Okay.
And you can have a deeper dive at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie?
Yeah, I don't really have any questions. Like I said, I think I have good information. Overall, I guess my only question in terms of sidewalks is, where can we use that money for sidewalks? Because we need sidewalks, but, yeah.
Route 28, Chaco-Taka-Harrah.
Right? That's what I'm wondering, so, you know. Just, again, brings it back to us that we have money in there, though, though I know we knew we had some, so.
Larry?
I have no further questions. Thank you, John.
Okay, I have no questions. Amy? You're second closest. You were second closest. Go ahead.
Thank you, and good evening again. Amy Usowski, Conservation Administrator. I'm just here to report to you on the Conservation Wetlands revolving account. So Conservation Commissions are authorized under the state of Massachusetts to be able to retain a portion of the filing fees in, in an account, and the purpose is to better uphold the Wetlands Protection Act. These funds can be used to pay for additional staff time, which actually, when I started here 10 years ago, and I was part-time, that was one of the things, I did a couple extra hours with, with that time, or that money, to do land management, to hire outside consultants. In the past, we have had a habitat study of kind of our intertidal zone area done. We have hired, and it's been a couple of years, you know, somebody to do third-party review of some of our projects that the Conservation Commission sees. And also, it can allow for us to better do, do some land management in order to improve wetland resources respective, in respective areas of the town. Bringing that up, we'll be coming to chat with you shortly, because one of the goals that the Conservation Commission has set is to how to better manage the old bog areas in the Bell's Neck. And over the past few years, we're getting some fragmities in the invasive reed popping up in there. This can completely take over a resource area, really degrade the habitat, really just become, you know, one species throughout there. So we have reached out and gotten some quotes for the work of the eradication. That's coming out in the about $13,000 range. So we'll be working to procure those services and, and speak with you more about that as it develops. But something like that is something that we would want to use this money for. So that being said, FY '21 in Quarter 1, our balance was about $43,700. And fast forward to now, FY '22, Quarter 1, our ending balance is $55,650. So we've accrued, on average, I did average it out, between $8,000 and $9,000 per fiscal year into that account, and that is the wetlands portion of our notices of intent, as well as this past May town meeting, town meeting, and then the Attorney General approved the change to our revolving fund language and allow, in, in unique circumstances, the acceptance of in lieu fees as mitigation for certain projects. So I guess with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Mary?
No, thank you, Amy. I think the average we get per year in the market span has shown that you're very cautious about spending money.
When I started, just to elaborate on that, the account was in the red when I started here, and we've, we are, we, internally, departmentally, we're very cognizant of what we spend there. We have enough money now to do a little bit more work, I think.
Thank you, Amy.
Julie?
No, I, I think it's great, actually. I worked on a project where we were able to do the in lieu of fees, and really, it's to everybody's benefit, you know? There was nowhere left to mitigate, and the town ended up getting some money for that, so I think it's a good thing, and thank you for the info.
Thank you. Mary?
Thank you, Amy. I'm all set.
Don?
Thank you, Amy. The only thing I will say is, well, your explanation was very appreciated. This is what I mean, because some of these are just generically, we started the year with this, we spent only the money for the purpose that it was stated for, and we ended with that, and there's nothing in between. And that, I'm just worried on a management basis, that just because it's revolving rather than appropriated, we should have exactly the same information available, like, we spent, you know, $8,000 with this company to get this thing. More than just, it was all within that framework of what was allowed.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. I didn't want to follow Emily. So I'll start with the Community Center Weight Room Fund, if that's okay? So the Weight Room Fund, in the report, shows that we established it in the year FY '12. It has consistently been used for replacing equipment. When we set up the fund, we actually had to replace all of the equipment, because they were, the equipment we had was not safety-regulated, because it didn't have coverings over the weight. So this was a way to do that. We would replace three to five pieces at a time. And back then, it's amazing that we could do that, because now, replacing three pieces of equipment costs quite a bit more. But I did appreciate the opportunity to go through this report with a fine-tooth comb, because I am in agreement with certainly what some of you are saying, that I think that it was just a standard number that was put in. And we, I did list out the things that we purchased, gym wipes, key fobs. The last set of key fobs we bought was the year that the gym opened, and equipment repair. And we do have a specific list, and I apologize, I didn't put that in, that first piece of equipment. We have when the equipment will date out of our system, meaning that we're putting good money at bad equipment. So we have a service plan for all of those. Our membership fees, which are set up to pay $15 for each person per month, and that money is turned directly over. We pay for a 19-hour-a-week employee and a personal trainer who is in the weight room, and those are free services that come with your membership. We listed the amount of people using it. I echo what Emily's report said about, this was a little bit harder as we're in COVID, and our, our hours have been cut, so our numbers were not as accurate as I would like to show. So I could go on talking about it, but is there specific questions that I missed? I'm sorry.
Questions? Mary?
I don't think so. I think that looks pretty thorough, Carolyn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don?
Pretty much echoing the same comment as the others. Everything looks great, but there's the in-between part I'm interested in. It's like, who was the money spent with to get what equipment?
Sure, and that is all provided to the, I'm sorry, Carol. It's all provided to the Finance Department. We don't buy anything. If we're procuring a piece of equipment, that's all provided to the town administration. We just have been fortunate and haven't had to procure anything like that. But the wipes are purchased through WB Mason, and all that does go through the town accountant's office.
And I do want to be clear, there's a reason for this stuff happening. I was there when this thing happened, started with you, with your facility.
Sure.
There had to be a way to cycle out weight equipment and buy new stuff, because that had a specific span of life, so.
Absolutely.
I get that. It's just, I'd be real interested if you got two treadmills or something during the year, as, as part of your annual report, that we were able to get this equipment.
Absolutely, and, and we can provide that. We can also provide it in advance, because we know when things, based on the use and the years of age that they are. So we can give that in advance and then say, similar to like the Fire Department does with their replacement trucks, there can be a program that people can see in advance. It'll probably make all the weight room people happy, too.
Thank you. Julie?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you very much.
Well, I think there should be a requirement that all selectmen use the weight rooms, so we have a good feel for what goes on there.
We, we open at 6:00 a.m. I can give you individual shifts.
We'll have to, we'll have to reduce your annual salary.
Would you like?
Final on that one, yes, thank you.
Would you like me to do the revolving fund at the Cultural Center now?
Yes.
So that report is providing you with the information about, there are currently 41 suites, rooms, classrooms, whatever you prefer to call them. There's a breakdown that we have 26 singles, eight doubles, one triple, two current nonprofits. The town has an office in that building where both Erica, myself, and the evening person work out of. In addition to that, there are three trailers. Two of those have been taken offline. Two of those have been taken offline, and there is only one currently being rented. The two that were taken offline were because of water damage. So that's, we work with the highway department. This revolving fund brings in the revenue from not only the studios, but also use for the gym, the auditorium, the music room, and the library, all that we rent daily, weekly, anytime we can. The money that, from this revolving fund, I apologize, pays for a 19-hour-a-week custodian. It pays for a 19-hour-a-week office assistant, OA 3, I believe was the title, which was And some small supplies, that's what we're buying, but honestly, the majority of it is donated or creatively borrowed from like the paper clips in the basement, things like that. It's certainly operating on a shoestring budget, but I believe it's bringing in pretty good monthly revenue. Was there something specific? Again, I could talk about it all day.
Larry?
No further questions. Thank you, Carolyn.
Julie?
No, I don't have any questions.
Mary?
All set, Carolyn. Thanks.
I wanted to say that this was Larry's opportunity to talk about total cost of operation and intergovernmental expenses.
Indirect costs.
I thought I would give you a break today. Thank you.
Next.
Next? Do I have, I don't have.
You're all set. Emily?
Emily Mitchell, Council on Aging Director. So our revolving fund is used for programming, so generally nutrition, education, health and wellness, recreation. As Julie mentioned, that's largely been on hold for the last 18 or so months. So that's why I included the report from fiscal year '20, which is crazy to say, the first two quarters, because that shows kind of more accurately the fund at its most robust. And we're working towards that. So beginning in July, we had resumed some of our smaller-scale programs, and this just September started almost at our pre-COVID capacity. So that's not reflected in the fiscal year 2022 first quarter because those are multi-week sessions that are still running. So I think for the COA, the biggest advantage is our responsiveness to seniors' needs and to program instructors. So throughout COVID, we noticed a number of vendors are not interested in coming back. They may have retired, some have moved away, some have just decided that they're not comfortable returning to offer this type of service in an in-person format. So some of the programs you see in that fiscal year '20 report aren't coming back. On the happy note, we have three or four new programs that have started and another few that are set to come online in the next couple of months. So having a revolving fund format lets us be responsive to that. So when an instructor comes up to me and says, hey, I'd like to teach a Tai Chi class, and it's December, I can say, great, let's get that on the books, let's start advertising it and taking program sign-ups, where we wouldn't be able to do that if we had to budget a year in advance. So I think that's the biggest benefit. The revenue for our revolving fund really comes in the form of those program fees. The fees are set by the instructors within the framework that it has to be a below-market rate, so they're meant to be affordable and accessible to our senior residents to participate in these programs. And then our expenses are then kind of turning around and paying the vendors for their services. A small portion of the program fees are deposited in the general fund as revenue. Very occasionally, we have one class that's taught by a town employee, and she charges, we charge a nominal fee of $2 per class, so it ends up being maybe $2,000 of revenue annually. And we use that money to buy program supplies. So that's really the only expense that's not paying program instructors directly. I don't think we've bought any program-related equipment since, it might even be fiscal year '19 at this point. We don't tend to need to purchase those supplies often. So the only expenditures we've had this year, the prior year, and maybe even the preceding year, was paying the instructors for their services. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Mary?
Nope, I'm all set. Fabulous. I would just like to see the line dancing return, but I understand that's Karen.
Yeah, that's actually not one of my programs, but I hope to see her back, too. I know that's a tremendously popular program in the building. Yes.
Don?
Just briefly, it's the same as before, it's just I'd like to see who it went to, not just it came in, we spent it on the right purpose, and this is how much we have left.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Mary?
I have none. Thank you, Emily. I think the success of the program speaks for itself.
Thank you.
Anything to add to the conversation?
Good evening. Carol Capola, Finance Director. I just wanted to give you a little insight into the Powers and Sullivan report, which is the towns' independent auditors. On an annual basis, the agreement with the auditors is that they, we will select a couple of departments or larger programs for the auditors to take an intensive look into. And so a year ago, I asked for the revolving funds to be completed. Now, when the prior administrator was here, we had made some changes to reporting revolving funds and department heads were to start reporting quarterly with narrative along with census information about who is optimizing these revolving funds, what kind of participants and things of that nature, more than just the numbers, because the numbers only tell so much. And so I did ask the auditors to take an intensive look. They did. They came back with the report about a month ago, a draft report. We had some discussions about it. And so you'll see that there was one item in FY '18 where the REC revolving fund did overspend. In FY '19, we caught that. We asked the director to come to the board, go to the finance committee, and ask for an increase, a temporary increase until town meeting, in which that was done. Pretty much consistently, departments have been reporting to the administrator with a little nudge, maybe sometimes, but on a quarterly basis of the information that we had set up with the prior administrator. And I think that's working well. I think that that probably the area that maybe we should have taken the next step forward and brought it to the board, because I think that you find the information helpful and it's helpful to understand the uses and purposes of those revolving funds. And some of it is significant. The Recreation Revolving Fund serves so many community members, and we made some changes to how we're accounting for that a couple of years ago or three years ago, in that we track it by program, by, you know, spring programs and fall programs and winter, to make sure that we're bringing in enough money to be able to pay for those programs, because that's the intention. So there's Mass General Law that supports how these revolving funds are set up, what kind of expenditures can be drawn from them. Full-time expenditures are only allowed if you're also going to be charging benefits with them. So thus far, Harwich has not charged any full-time, just 19-hour or under staff members, 19 hours a week, I should mean, I should say. But I'm here to answer anything that you would like. I believe that we will, I'll work with the administrator to come up with a template for your annual town meeting, which I think makes sense, so that all 12 of the revolving funds are being reported in the same manner.
Thank you, Carol. Larry, questions? Comments?
I don't. That's a good report. I guess my just overall theme would be to understand how a revolving fund integrates into the normal budgets, because a lot of these are, you know, we're spending, we're spending money both in revolving fund and general fund, recreation for instance. Be kind of interesting to know how they integrate to get the programs out there.
Well, and to go beyond that, I was thinking this evening that, you know, perhaps we should be, you know, internally running some kind of educational seminars on revolving funds. And these particular revolving funds in the town of Harwich are all set up under the same regulations in which that, you know, the funds stay with, within the revolving fund at the end of the fiscal year, where some other revolving funds, they revert back, the balance reverts back to the general fund. And so I think that it's helpful to hold some kind of educational programs with regard to revolving funds, because certainly the information is vast coming from the Department of Revenue and the general laws that support them, so.
Yeah, I guess my comments were going in slightly a different direction. If we're trying to do a program, and some of that may be funded through revolving funds, whether it's equipment, some of that may be funded through the general fund to get it, to be sure it's happening, is a way to, you know, integrate that together so we fully understand what we're about.
The programs that are being funded through these revolving funds are not supported from any other revenue source. These are not supported through any other appropriations. So we're not appropriating money in the general fund for a recreation program because the recreation, the folks that participate in that program, and let me know, you can interrupt me if I'm on the wrong track here, if the folks that are participating in that program aren't paying for that, the program itself. So we're not supporting any of it with any other special revenue funds or enterprise funds or general fund. We, the finance office reviews each invoice, so the folks that, the administrative assistants or executive assistants that are processing the invoices have, must have those invoices approved by the department head, and that goes for any invoice in this community. And then those invoices come to finance office, they're reviewed by, one of my assistants, and they're reviewed by myself, and they're reviewed by the town administrator. So there are five sets of reviews for every invoice that's processed in the town of Harwich.
All set, Larry?
I think I have some property discussion to get better understanding.
Julie?
No, that, so that was my understanding, is that's why they're a revolving fund. But I think, too, with REC, I just had one question, because REC with the, I think it's 2018, I'm so blind. Wasn't that because of a procurement issue or something? Wasn't that?
In FY '18?
Yeah. Didn't it?
When we dug, really dug into it, the, there is a program that's run out of REC Recreation SAT program, and that, which the REC director was not aware of. And so that was drawing on those funds. And so we had to make a correction, and which we did, as soon as it was identified.
Thank you. Yeah, I thought that there was, you know, some minor issue, and that's really the only reason I was asking. But no, I think, I think the revolving funds are important because, you know, we don't want to have, you have to go through a lengthy process to get certain programs that you would otherwise have to vet through a million different sources to get the approval, and you have the ability to run a program for, you know, the elderly or the REC or whatever, or a community center. So I think they're important and they serve their purpose. I think we track it well. I think the fact that we've got all these different checks and balances, if you really want to know what one department's spending money on, you can go and ask to run a report, like for each department. You could see quarterly what people were spending the money on, so. I appreciate the reports and the time put into them, but I do think the information is there, and I think we're doing a good job at tracking that info, so thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Mary?
I applaud your effort to have sort of a standard template to look at it. It was a little unwieldy going through each one, and I appreciated some of the education on what the programs were, but to at least get the math part of it on one format, so I really appreciate that. I'm also fascinated that you've got five levels of approvals of every single invoice, not over a certain dollar value, every single invoice. I can't believe we could have a problem with that level of control, so.
But the only exception to that is there are some very small departments that do not have, like an executive assistant, and so that would take that.
Take one step out.
Yes.
Still four. That's pretty healthy.
Don?
Yeah, this is that moment. I mean, there was a reason I did ask for this for all those years, because coming into the discussion with the town administrator four years ago, I asked him specifically, who's responsible for signing and approving purchases on this? And he said, well, the departments are. And I said, what's the oversight? And he goes, there isn't any. It's their money. And that concerned me. I know that we've changed directions about the oversight, which is heartening to me, but that wasn't always the case. Just to point that out, not to discuss the wisdom of it, but we managed to spend over 50 grand on the pet burial ground without recognizing what was going on, and some of those procurements were subject to prevailing wages. And they, there was no way of tracking that because it was actually being run out of one office and it wasn't being reviewed by anybody. So to have it come through this way is far superior. Again, all I really want to know, and all the townspeople, because if it weren't a budget, they would know. There would be a line item that would say, we want to get 4,000 widgets with this money. You can't move money within a municipal budget, as you know, but I'm not sure everybody else knows that. If it's appropriated that way, it can't be shifted around and respent somewhere else. But I wouldn't expect a whole hell of a lot less accountability from the taxpayers. And that translated into one of the other major concerns I had, is that there seemed to be, everybody's so big on using the word silos, but there seem to be separate silos that are being built, like that's our money and that's their money. And you can't run a town that way, especially if there's money left over at the end of the year. Well, we'll roll it over because it's our money. It doesn't work like that with appropriations, but it seems like some of these things we're immune from even discussing. And that's heartening, too, that we're at the point where we have the right to look at these things. I mean, it's, that's the point I was trying to make all along, is the accountability and the requirements for procurements and all the things that go with it, the dollar values, they don't change just because of the nature of where the funds came from. They're still the same responsibilities.
I think the game changer in Harwich has been administration's absolute, no tolerance policy on procurement. And that really sets the bar for all of the departments, and that has, honestly, it has been a significant improvement here.
And it becomes that much more important because you're talking about a half a million dollars worth of money now. It was never contemplated that way. If you look at the articles, they all started out with 20 or 40, and we've gotten to the point where there's special-purpose funds. No doubt that they're necessary. You've got to have equipment if you're going to be playing sports. All those things are necessary, but what it is you're getting and how it is you're getting it is just as important.
Thank you, Carol. Joe, anything to add?
We can have the four departments that didn't present tonight come back if the board would like to hear from those departments. And then last but not least, you'll see, the quickest way to see it is if you look at the Powers and Sullivan audit report on the last page, page six, you have the list of all the revolving funds, and there's a missing tooth, and that was the one I was making reference to before. It's the ADA revolving fund, and that falls to the responsibility of the administrator. And so when I prepared my notes last week to do my report, I've discovered that there's never been any funds in that one. So working with Carol and Amy, finally, we've discovered that the ADA revolving fund was created at the 2014 special town meeting within the annual, excuse me, with a spending limit of $2,500, and the revenue source was understood to be originally parking tickets related to handicap parking violations. However, I believe the treasurer found today that there may have been one parking ticket over the last seven years for $200. And so obviously, my predecessor had not used it. I haven't been inclined to use it, nor was I aware of it. So that might be one that we might want to revisit as we do that article for next year's town meeting. Does it make sense to have that in there? Certainly, the purpose of that fund is laudable. It's meant to fund interpreter services related for ADA compliance issues. Well, we had a town meeting last week in the Cart Recorder, which is a wonderful ADA compliance service, was paid for through the computer coordinator's budget. And so we're already accounting for that. So I would ask the board to look at that as we go forward. Do we wish to have that fund continue on, recognizing that it's never been utilized the way it was intended?
Thank you. Anyone in the public wish to speak? All right, next steps, Joe. What are you, what are you going to, what are you going to present to us? Is this, as we get into revolving funds through budget, is that when the recommendations are going to be made for? the recommendations are going to be made for changes?
Well, I think it's going to be the standalone articles first on recodifying every year as we have to under the statute for the revolving funds, with an eye towards, let's reevaluate those purposes. As the board said, John made some great points on the funds that come under his control, and I have questions about the fund that comes under my control. So I think it's better to do that with the draft articles that will be coming forward. And if the board wishes to do that sooner rather than later, we can make that happen.
Any other asks for the board of more information? Don? Mary?
Nope, all set.
Julie?
No, thanks.
Larry? And the, the last was, we've had a fair amount of the public talk about revolving funds, or I have at least, building up balances and things that could be done in a budget yearly. So programs that are programs that are done all of the time. Has there been any discussion with department heads about taking those programs out and not doing them in a revolving fund, but doing them as part of their budget? So if it's reoccurring and it happens every year, to Don's point about some of these balances, now Cultural Center or Middle School Cultural Center shows an end of the year balance of $300,000. We're not spending much money out of that account. Based on what the Maintenance and Facilities Director says, there's a fair amount of money to be spent on that building. So are we going to continue to spend money out of people's taxes and budget, or are we going to spend that money?
So I think to the question of have we discussed it, I can tell you that I did not discuss it with this past year's budget effort. But anticipating this conversation tonight, that's the appropriate course of action now, is you've heard these reports about where the funds have been at, how they've looked quarter over quarter, year over year, but as we move towards town meeting, that should be part of the discussion. And it is something that Carol and I can incorporate as we go through the budget discussions with departments, looking at the entire department. We've talked about, we're going to be reviewing operating requests, capital requests, community preservation, and in the instance of, say, seven or eight departments, we can also add to that discussion, the revolving fund. And is there a way to incorporate that, or should it be incorporated into the operating budget? And we'll be able to report that out as we build the fiscal year '22 budget.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That was one of the fundamental thoughts going into this, is that if you're accounting for volatility, and you don't know whether you're going to have six or eight or 12 teams playing or whatever, I mean, the revolving funds made sense. But if you've got predictability with the process, and you're doing this every year with this instructor and this many people, or whatever the thing is, if it's a planned revision of something, no matter how laudable the purpose, that's the whole point of municipal finance, is to throw it into the budget so it gets scrutiny over the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, the town meeting. It's not about whether it's worthwhile or not, it's about oversight. So if things are building up and there's a predictability to those particular expenditures, we should be kind of segueing them into, it shouldn't be on its own morphing into a really super large account that's basically just for one program, because that, I mean, it's taking, in the extreme, not that you would take it all, but it's taking a half a million dollars offline that would be in the regular budget for us to assess for relative priorities, programs against other programs. We don't have that ability, because it's all segregated, and that's my money. It makes me insane when I hear that comment made. It's my money, it's not the town's money.
Thank you. Board members, do you want the other four department heads? I think you said four department heads that weren't here. Do you want them back next week, or are you comfortable with the reports that are in the packet?
No, I do. I think at least a written report. But to your comments, Michael, I think you say it better than I did, but that was my comment about integrating the revolving fund into the general funds, who understood what the program was in its entirety.
So that was my message, basically, for budgeting. I think when we look at these revolving funds, we need to look at what programs just are programs.
Certainly.
Instead of putting more taxes on people, let's look at spending some of the money in budgets and not revolving funds. So written reports are okay for the board members on the department heads, or do you want them back?
I don't need them back.
Okay. So we don't need them back.
I do, then, if I could, want to thank the colleagues that came here tonight and had to present and did present. I think they did a great job, and I think they should get extra credit for doing that this evening.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I agree.
Absolutely.
And then lastly, Joe, we just learned that two trailers were taken offline behind the middle school, and rather than let things rot into the ground, can you give us a report on what's going on with those and how we get rid of them or fix them? Because it's only going to get worse.
Can I just clarify?
You can.
I really don't want Sean Levy to watch this, I'm afraid of him. So there are supplies in one of them. When the Cape Cod Tech School closed, we did bring over theater seating and things like that, so they are covered, but we couldn't have rented it because of artwork in there. So there is stuff in there, and I'm sure we can move it, but I just didn't want to misrepresent that, so I apologize.
Okay. Still ask you to look into that, Joe.
He's still afraid of us.
Thank you. Moving on to discussion with town planner on the local comprehensive plan. John, this is why you're here.
Yeah. Thank you again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm going to go over some general points from the memorandum I prepared for Joe, and I'll try to be as short but instructive as I can going over that. First point I'll make is a relatively general one about assumptions I've made with, and I know this can be confusing, tonight we're talking not about the LCP, but the LPC, which is the Local Planning Committee, a subcommittee which is established to help guide and advise on the LCP, the Local Comprehensive Plan, in this case, the update on the Local Comprehensive Plan. I've made the assumption throughout that, A, we need a subcommittee, because I can't imagine the planning board just doing this with its current docket. This will take about two years, I imagine, meeting every couple weeks. So the assumption I've made, and I hope you join me in this, is a fair one, that we need a subcommittee to do this work. The other assumption I've made is that the Board of Selectmen should be the appointing authority for the LPC. There is no specific, you know, point in law that says that has to be the case. You know, theoretically, the planning board could be the appointing authority. I think the Board of Selectmen is in a better position to do so. The Board of Selectmen is used to making appointments. In fact, it has an Appointments Committee, and also occupies kind of a broader space in the policy hierarchy in the town. So I think it is in a better position to appoint a broader, more representative group of people to the LPC than the planning board might. So again, I hope, and I speak more in depth about that in the memo, but I hope you share kind of my assumptions on those points. Now, getting into some specifics in the memorandum, I've set out what I believe to be the role of this local planning committee. It will be advisory to the planning board. The planning board actually will take the update to town meeting for adoption. Of course, it would be on, it would be put on the Board of Selectmen's warrant. Ultimately, I believe the committee's charge should be formalized and articulated in a mission statement, and that mission statement should be incorporated into an organizational document, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. The other thing I'd have you consider right at the outset, you know, because it's something I've recognized in work on master plans for LCPs in the past, is whether you might consider in that organizational document just keeping this LPC together to assist with the implementation of the plan. Often, there's so much focus on getting the plan together, and there's not as much focus on what happens the day after that plan, in the five or 10-year period of implementation of all those actions which the town commits to do. So I would suggest that it might be a good idea to, rather than just establish this committee in an ad hoc way, to establish it to actually participate, if not oversee, some of those implementation actions once the update is done and adopted. Another point the board should consider is when to establish or appoint the LPC, and specifically before or after selection and hiring of the LCP consultant. There are advantages either way. An advantage of establishing the LPC prior to hiring the consultant is the consultant would come on, almost ready to go. There would be an LPC, there would be the committee in place, be able to start on the Local Comprehensive Plan work earlier. The advantage of waiting is that this committee can help, if the board so chooses to help select the consultant. Could work that into even the RFP for choosing the consultant. So I've set that out in the memo, but there's advantages, relative advantages or disadvantages of when to establish and appoint the LPC. Then moving on to member composition of this group, you know, how many people and what type of people should the committee have? I would suggest, and I think I referenced this the last time we spoke about the general subject, a committee of about nine to 11, nine or 11 people. Certainly, it should be an odd number. Too large of a committee makes work unwieldy and unproductive, but too small of a committee unduly limits the perspectives and opinions of the community, and we're trying to get as much representation as we can through this particular committee. Another thing about composition, maybe we should think a little bit about, is whether we should favor appointments coming from the community at large, having more at-large members, or having the committee filled primarily with what I would call ex officio members, members who are on the committee by virtue of their membership of other committees. Two ex officio members, I certainly would suggest, just as a foundation, one from the Board of Selectmen and one from the planning board. But from there, if you assume, let's say you're going to have 11 members, there's nine other seats to fill. Do you want to have those filled primarily with community members, primarily with other ex officio members, or somehow split that? I'm in the camp of splitting that. I would like, say, a member also from CONSCOM, Historic, Board of Health, and ZBA, which would leave probably about four at-large members. The value of the at-large members, too, is the community feels a greater stake that you don't have to go through the gauntlet first of getting on a committee, you know, to actually kind of participate in the work of the committee. I'd also recommend against appointing staff to the committee, because of the significant time commitments involved in that committee's work. Certainly, if staff is needed, they can participate on an as-needed basis, and I'll obviously be participating heavily as the planning director. I also believe that organizational document I referenced should be prepared prior to or the commencement of the committee's LCP business, so that the committee doesn't actually have to work on that organizational document, but can step right in and know the rules of the game, so to speak, with that document being in place. And I'd fully expect to draft that document, be happy to vet it with the select board. The last kind of subset of issues I want to discuss in my memorandum is member selection criteria. And of course, that might be a little bit different if you're favoring ex officio members versus favoring members at large in the community. It's more important to have, I would say, specific criteria qualifications if you're going to have a good number of members at large, because of course, the primary qualifications, if you're just going to name ex officio members, is that they're on a particular board, and that board might elect them. But let's just assume that we're going to have a good number of community members. As I mentioned to you last time, I wouldn't be too stringent with the qualifications. Good LPC members can come from, you know, any background or any walk of life. You know, qualifications could be as varied as relevant land use planning and planning experience or expertise, and I'm looking to my left at a, we're very lucky to have former town planners who live in the town.
That's not the way you want it.
Or bring a particular important perspective or representation like we have in our community with the Cape Verdean community. Or, you know, it could be as simple as, you know, a love and affection and a connection for the town of Harwich. We shouldn't leave that out as well. You know, this committee should be, the members shouldn't be agenda or single interest-driven or self-interested. Members shall act in the overarching best interests of the town as a whole, with a collaborative and constructive, multidisciplinary and multi-perspective approach to the committee and its work. And all those things can be put in, what I would characterize as a solicitation for members. And that solicitation, in my opinion, should both go on the website, and I think it should go on the Chronicle as well. That solicitation, we'd also have to establish some dates as well, you know, when we'd publish it, when it would go out on the website. But within that solicitation, when responses would be due, and when selections would be made. And of course, I would expect the Board of Selectmen to be the appointing authority and also make the selections in that case. And of course, the Board of Selectmen could use the Appointments Committee, could use the Appointments Committee plus some staff. So there are things to discuss. I think those responses that I discussed from, let's say, potential members at large in the community should require at a minimum a CV and a narrative statement of interest. So from my discussion, I'd like you to take a few things away, and we can certainly talk about them again. When does the Board of Selectmen want to empanel and appoint the subcommittee? Before or after hiring the consultant? What is the number of members the Board of Selectmen is looking at? I would suggest certainly odd, but nine to 11. Whether you favor kind of ex officio members or at-large members, or again, a split of both. And, you know, if there's anything I didn't mention that you'd like in the draft solicitation for at-large community members, any qualifications that I've missed in my memo or in speaking that you think is particularly important to add in that solicitation. And, you know, another thing I didn't mention in depth, but that organizational document, that would, there would clearly be a lot of discussion about procedure in there as well, about how members run meetings, to name a committee chair, and that sort of thing. So it wouldn't just be the charge of the committee, but it would be the regulations by which that committee operates its business. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and I, you know, this is going to be a slog, but a well worth it slog, so I'm expecting to come back to the board pretty regularly, even before we begin the LCP work. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Comments from the board, Larry?
Thank you, John.
Board questions?
You okay?
Hi, Amy.
Good night.
Found it quite believe, are you?
She was sneaking out. I appreciate the update. It was a very thorough memo, and I'm in favor of, you know, moving ahead, as you said. My only comment was, and I know you're coming back to this, I do favor more at-large and ex officio, because I see this as our primary mechanism to get public input. So I want to do everything we can to be sure people feel that this is wide open for discussion, and we can go from that. I also agree with having the panel stay in, continue for some time. I know my corporate experience has been spending too many hours on strategic plans that were nice weights for, and filters for the cabinet for your desk, was never looking at them again, so someone is sort of tracking that. But I like your document and your recommendations.
Julie?
Thank you for your info. I thought it was, again, like Larry said, very thorough. I'm interested in, to sort of pick your brain on the consultant part. How long do you think it, you know, it would take to get people in? You know, are there a lot out there, you know, based on the current backlog of everything? Is a consultant for this type of issue going to be hard to find?
Yeah, I'm on a, I'm on a list serve for planners in Massachusetts, and there are an awful lot of solicitations for updates or LCPs in the first instance that I find, I think are going unfilled. There's a lot of competition. There isn't a huge domain of planners out there that do it. It's a relatively specialized work. We're pretty fortunate on Cape Cod, you know, I'm not going to disqualify us at this point, but we're pretty fortunate on Cape Cod to have some relatively local planning firms, I would, Cape Cod and southeastern Massachusetts, that do a good deal of Cape Cod LCPs, and they're quite good and adept at doing it.
Oh, that's, well, that's good news.
Yeah.
And do you have, I mean, it's probably an unfair question, I'm just wondering, how much, how much a consultant like that would? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Mary?
When do you need us to make these selections to keep your part on track?
Yeah, I would rather have you just think about it, and I can discuss with Joe, you know, coming back as I finish the RFP and we think about moving it to a release and for procurement.
So we're not holding you up to not do this tonight?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of things. Thank you so much for mentioning the Cape Verdean community and legacy people, because I'm assuming they don't want to be marginalized in this process. I'm going to amplify on what Larry said. I have knowledge of a bunch of people who serve on a number of different important committees, so, and some of those committees also send ex officio members to the CPC. The question then becomes, how many burdens are you going to put on the committee that has five or seven people to, you know, farm out a member to the CPC, also maybe serve on two very important regulatory committees? I don't, that's why I would tend to agree with Larry, for the other reason. It becomes so burdensome at a point in time that you're not going to have the full attention that this really deserves. So the alternative way of approaching that, though, is rather than having a bunch of people coming, you know, appointed from the committee, is you can shear off certain sections of the draft and shoot them out to each of those committees so that they can look them over, and the whole committee can say, eh, this is great except for this. So you get the same kind of interlocking discussion, but you don't necessarily have to lean so heavily on appointees. We're just getting to the point where we're filling most of our vacancies. And it's kind of important to just not throw people at this. I mean, this is kind of like the roadmap. We had that discussion at town meeting, even the comprehensive wastewater management plan is driven by what kind of town you see this being, and how big is it? What does it do? Is there an area that you really want to address economically? All those things are driving factors to other things. Housing production plan, I mean, who do you need to work here? What's that going to look like? So you kind of have to do this first, and you really need people to dedicate themselves to that.
Yeah. I agree.
Joe, anything to add?
Just thanks to John for keeping the process going. An excellent memo with some great questions to follow up on. And I appreciate the opportunity for John and I to discuss further and then come back to you folks with the next steps.
Anyone in the public? Joe, how long ago was this money appropriated for the LCP?
At least two town meetings ago?
2018.
So I guess my point is, I don't think we should talk about this a whole lot longer. It's time to get moving, and I certainly appreciate what you've done. Some of your comments and suggestions are no-brainers in my mind. First question is, who's going to do the mission statement? Because I think that's an extremely important piece for picking the LPC members. My comment on the, whether the LPC or the Board of Selectmen should hire the consultant, I think that the elected body, along with staff, should hire the consultant, and then they should work, and we can debate that now. I would like to get you as much information as you want to get going. We have an interview committee that, once we take your suggestion and advertise in the Chronicle and on the website, people, I would imagine, will start to apply, and I think we should do as much outreach as we possibly can. I do agree that more at-large is more important than ad hoc, because I think we can always rely on our boards that we have now to come in and give their input. But I think a lot of what you've said makes sense, and I don't see that it taking two or three or four or five more meetings to get there. So Joe, I would ask that this be on with direct questions and asks within the next two weeks, so the board can start this process and get going. Wintertime is not a bad time to advertise for people, because they tend to have more time then, so maybe we can draw out more people to be on this committee and be involved during an off-season for people than we will during a busy season. So I would ask, Joe, that we move this forward as quickly as possible.
Yeah, with those comments, if I can just take the liberty to actually then provide you, is my next step, a draft solicitation for members. It sounds like the direction is to establish and empanel the subcommittee prior to or parallel with the RFP process for hiring the consultant. I'm happy to do that, and I favor that anyway. And I think that, I don't imagine a complicated mission statement, especially because it's an advisory role, it's not really a steering committee. So I imagine having that as part of that solicitation.
Thank you. The, if we could, Joe, it can't be on the eighth, Mary's not with us on the eighth, so sometime after the eighth, and as much as you can get us for direct wants that night. I would also say that the RFP process normally consists of it being opened by the administrator or designee of the administrator and two other staff members. I think on this RFP, the Board of Selectmen, or at least a subcommittee, the Board of Selectmen should be involved in picking the consultant, and it shouldn't just be a staff decision. So if we can add that into your notes, I think that's important. Thank you. Moving on, C and D, Mary, I think we can just read motions.
Okay. I move that we vote to hold a disciplinary hearing for alleged violations. Perks, 545 Route 28.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero, Joe?
I move that we vote to appoint the town administrator to be the hearing officer for the disciplinary hearing for perks.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Next is discussion and possible vote to approve and sign, nope, nope, approved gift to the town supporting the Crowell Barn landscaping plan. We've all been presented with the information. I know there's people here to present tonight or answer any questions. I would ask the board if they are ready to go to a motion, and then we can have brief discussion, or if they want the presentation first.
I'm good with a motion.
Go ahead, Mary.
I move that we vote to approve a gift to the town supporting the Crowell Barn landscaping plan.
Second. Moved in second, any discussion from the board? Anyone in the audience wish to say anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero, Joe?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Would you jump up to the mic? And we do not mind seeing photos without the presentation. Thank you, David.
Your vote tonight allows us to do what you're seeing. The, let's go back to the dirt one, if we can, Jimmy. Okay. Maybe three weeks ago, we got the whole site graded, loomed, et cetera. That was three weeks ago. Now, the rest of them are all today. Johnson Tree Farm delivered three very large trees to the site.
I wondered where they were going.
Actually, the largest one is apparently going to Orleans, but the others were all This is one being planted. I was very impressed. Paul Doane was up there a lot, and I've got to mention his efforts, even though we beat him up for a while this summer. He was very instrumental, but he was, he was there with me. He stayed a while, I left pretty quickly. So this is the tree being put in. You know, the very big tree on the truck looks a little smaller once it gets planted, but it's still a substantial-sized tree. There's three of them at three of the corners of the building. There's another one. Was there one more slide?
No, that was all yours.
Okay. So there's a lot more. I also want to mention the Historic Society. Lynda is here, and they contributed a good sum of money to have this happen. It was in part in memory of Peg Rose. So we got a feel-good project here, folks, and that's all I have to say.
And it looked good project.
Yeah, it looked good. Looks awesome.
Drive by if you haven't.
Looked quite different after the tornado, so this is, this is going to look great.
Drive by if you haven't already. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, if I could, I know time's of the essence, but before we continue on, David offered some thanks, but I have to thank David. David has mentioned Lynda and the folks at the Historical Society, and certainly Paul Doane. Paul Doane was the architect, in theory, in fact, and in process of all this. And they came to me, as you said, I will not forget that day, coming around the corner from Town Hall, trying to assess what happened the day of the tornado, and when I saw all the trees down and around the barn, I never expected to see the barn. So to be able to have these folks dedicate their, their time and effort and resources and money, and then also to have it in memory of Peg is just a wonderful thing all around. So David, you mentioned that we beat up on Paul. I beat up on you and Paul, and so thank you, David, Paul, Lynda, everybody, for what you've been doing these past months to beautify this area. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. In fair play, look at the picture and look at what we don't have yet.
I understand.
Okay. An accessible walkway that, we've had conversations with Joe about.
And since we didn't discuss that tonight.
Well, we only have a $100, $200 parking ticket into that, but we're going to increase that.
Looks like a sidewalk to me.
Yeah. We've got plenty of money in that one. I'd take a motion on F and G.
Okay. I move that we vote to approve and sign the fiscal year 2022 sewer rate relief fund application.
Second. Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero, Joe?
Thank you.
I move that we vote to approve and sign the grant agreement with Barnstable County on behalf of its Economic Development Council, acting through the Cape Cod Commission License Plate Application.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Joe, I would ask you to introduce H.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those two items that you approved are coming around now for the board's signatures. This is the sewer. Thank you. So item H actually relates to a discussion that occurred today at the Affordable Housing Trust meeting. Several weeks ago at our regular meeting, the trust had asked me to research and present back to the, to the trust what they understood to be their inventory of properties under the care, custody, and control of the Affordable Housing Trust. And unfortunately, what I came back with was simply the parcels that we're very familiar with right now, which are the five parcels that make up the Marsalina Estate off of Pleasant Lake Avenue, and no other properties. And so what I discovered, is what you have in front of you in the packet, you'll see certified vote by our town, excuse me, a vote certified by the town clerk that occurred at town meeting on May 6, 2019, under Article 61. And that vote then follows a spreadsheet that I created, and I will just tell you, if you're looking at the spreadsheet, mercifully, the Albro House is no longer on that list, and that was a result of the vote at town meeting. But what you have in front of you are seven parcels that Town Meeting authorized the town through the Board of Selectmen to convey to the Affordable Housing Trust. That, that authority still exists, but the town, prior administration, did not take the next step. And so if the town intends on deeding these properties to the Affordable Housing Trust, I needed to bring it to your attention this evening, and there should be some discussion about that. Discussion, because first I mentioned that the Albro House was originally contemplated in this list, but as I was told today, if you can see, that that item, which is referred to as Item D, was excluded by the Town Meeting vote. And there was a further restriction that I can talk about separately. But discussion, because within that, it's, contemplates the Board of Selectmen relinquishing the parcel of land upon which the old recreation building and the area that's presently used by the Harwich Junior Theater. Now, there's a problem insofar as the property card, the assessing department presently shows that as being recreation land, and so Counsel Katie Klein from KP Law, and I've been working on this for several weeks now, and she was asking for the, the original vote of town meeting that dated that property first to the Recreation Department. We haven't found any such action. And in speaking with the Chair of the Rec and Youth Commission, his understanding is that while they refer to that as the Rec Building, the Rec Department has never understood that to be in their care, custody, and control. In any event, there are seven parcels that Town Meeting has authorized the Board of Selectmen to deed and to convey to the Affordable Housing Trust. It hasn't been done. The agenda topic tonight allows you to have discussion and a possible vote to take care of that.
Joe, if I may, I'd further with the Rec Building that, and Don was part of this conversation with the lease to the Harwich Junior Theater. We had extensive conversation about this for two or three years, when we, when we discussed the potential of moving them into the Cultural Center. That building is under the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectmen, not the Rec Commission. They were never brought into that.
That's our understanding as well, but we just wanted to circle back with Counsel, because she's reading it exactly as the property card states, and I've told her I think the property card's in error.
Well, we're all very aware of the Town Meeting action on these properties, so what would you like the motion to read?
Whatever the board's willing to do, if it's your intent to direct administration to take necessary steps to create the deeds and record the deeds on behalf of the trust for all the parcels as, as the vote of Town Meeting occurred, we can do that, or anything within that.
Start with Don.
So moved.
Okay. Don?
Before you get that, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
There's a couple of subtexts here. The trust has been working for two years with the Junior Theater to have them continue to occupy the building and develop the site. We're actually well along talking MHP, so it's kind of like big news to us that we didn't have the site under our control to be able to do that, so it is really important that something happens pretty quick. There, and there were also a couple of other properties that we were, in all honesty, were going to take in but flip, because they were not resulting in any kind of substantial development capabilities. But the money would be really welcome to be able to focus on Sisson Road and on the Marsalina property. So we may take some of these, and you may see them getting flipped to get converted into cash, just so everybody knows that.
Well, I think the Town Meeting action was clear, and we gave the land at Town Meeting to the trust for affordable housing purposes, not just to build affordable housing.
I get it. I just wanted everybody to know upfront.
For an action from this board, though, we're well beyond an action from this board other than conveying to the trust, because Town Meeting already told us to. So Mary made the mo, John?
Joe, you asked me to take a look at these properties. Do you want to, you might want to just understand a few land characteristics as you do this. So a couple of the properties are heavily burdened by wetlands. And all the property that's near the, off of 39, off Depot Road, remember, that's a, that's a wellhead protection district in the town, and it's adjacent to water district land. I'm not saying it can't be developed, just understand, though, sometimes properties are, are properties on a spreadsheet, but they have real, on-the-ground characteristics. I don't know how much, I don't know why these were the candidates that were authorized to be conveyed, but I guess just think about it as you might convey them, and if some of them are flipped, I imagine that the potential buyers would have to do that due diligence anyway.
And John, I thank you for that, because I know the Depot Road one was debated fairly heavily by members of the Conservation Commission, not acting for the Conservation Commission, but they were debated on Town Meeting floor fairly heavily. It was also, it is also understood that if the Affordable Housing Trust does not use these lands for affordable housing purposes there, to give them back to the town. Is that the same understanding you have, Don?
Yeah.
Okay. So if it doesn't work out, they come back into the town's, into the town's role by another Town Meeting action?
Unless we can convert them, as I said, into an asset.
Right.
That'll further another project.
Right. But due diligence, I do believe, falls on the buyer.
And whatever the case is, we need to convey them, because we were told to do that two years ago, right?
Correct. Is that the way you see it, Joe?
Well, I'm an agent of the Executive Board, so I will always say that Town Meeting has authorized you, if you choose to do it.
Right.
Town Meeting can't compel you to convey these lands, but in the spirit of collegiality, that Town Meeting says you can do it, and I'm looking tonight for authorization to do it.
I would just ask one more question. When was this Town Meeting vote?
This one here, you mean?
Yeah.
This was May 6, 2009. And I'm looking tonight for authorization to do it.
I would just ask one more question. When was this Town Meeting vote?
This, this one here, you mean?
Yeah.
This was May 6, 2019.
So here we are again, two years later, taking an action on something that was voted two and a half years ago, which I'll comment on after we go through the voting process. Mary made a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Larry seconded it. Any further discussion?
I just remember this from what I saw.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Joe, just a sub-comment on this. This is happening a lot. The one that, the one that I checked on last, two weeks ago in the tax office about a tax taking, because a resident asked me about a lot, and it, and we did a tax taking on it, we did everything until we got to the goal line, and then we stopped, and the tax collector found the paper in a file, and the deed never had been recorded. Across the board with Town Meeting actions, we are waiting and waiting and waiting. I'm not blaming you.
No, no, that's.
Blaming, I am blaming boards and in other cases, staff. But how do we get to a point where we're not bringing things up to, to, I mean, Bank Street, West Harwich School, Willow Street? It, the list goes on and on and on. And my suggestion comes from somebody sitting in the back row who came up with a spreadsheet a long time ago on the DRI for the wastewater comprehensive management plan, as well as the wastewater management plan, and it was an action checklist based with dates and when we got things done. And she got that passed, I think through great resistance from some of the other board and the past administrator, because I think it held people's feet to the fire. But we have a lot of old things that we haven't done, and I think that this board has done an exceptional job checking boxes. And I think Town Meeting was an example of how we're operating now and the internal communication and the efforts that everybody's making. But we still have Brooks Park Lighting. We still have a lot of CPC articles. We have Judah Eldridge that continues to cost us money every year in accruing interest. Can we at least table or talk about creating an action checklist so that when we check a box, we actually check it, and we can follow up so these surprises don't continue to happen? Because this surprise is gonna, has cost us enough time where these properties can't be flipped in a reasonable amount of time to aid us in the affordable housing crisis that we talk about every single week. So whether we agenda it or we just give consensus that we want an action list from the town administrator so that we can start finishing what we haven't finished. Joe?
So with regard to this particular item, you know, I, I thank the membership of the Affordable Housing Trust, and we had that conversation today. Now, I thank them because unbeknownst to them, they were making a statement that was incorrect. They were laboring under the assumption that they had, had been deeded and conveyed these properties, and I can understand why. It was a vote of Town Meeting. Typically, that's the most difficult part of it. And so having that directed from them to quote, "Give us the list that was created two years ago," gave me a starting point. Unfortunately, or right, wrong, or indifferently, I found that it hadn't been done. But my, my first response to what you've said is, whatever happened in the past to not be completed, I have said since my appointment as administrator that, and it's why I keep referring to the number of days to Town Meeting, because the actions that happen at Town Meeting are critically important. Not just our budget, it's not just our laws, it's actions like this. And so at the conclusion of our special Town Meeting last week, I assembled the administration team, and we went through every one of those articles and said, okay, what are the next steps to make sure that we owned it and that I could then direct other staff members to then take those actions? So know that my pledge going forward is that as we go through Town Meetings, administration will immediately do a debrief on those Town Meetings and start parsing out the work to be done and track it. For me, however, I don't know what I don't know. And so I would ask each of you to think of things you're aware of to ask others, and if I knew where the camera was, I would look at the camera and say, and to the general public, if you're aware of something that occurred in the past that hasn't been completed, let us know in administration. Because I think what we've demonstrated, and when I say me, it's not, never the royal we, it's we in administration. So me, Megan, Danielle, Ellen, Carol in Finance, we immediately go through our due diligence. We know where to look. You go to the town clerk's office. You look for the warrant of the year that may be in question. With regard to that recreation building, we, we did a little sleuthing on that one where if you look at the property card, it made reference to a date in 1995. So we went to that Town Meeting and found the original action of Town Meeting, and that's why it's in there. We found that Town Meeting gave that land to the Board of Selectmen. Why was it coded that way? I couldn't speak to it, but at least we've discovered that error and can correct it. So if anybody's aware of actions that are two and three years old, procurement, and I appreciate the comments earlier of our finance director, you know, we, that team has made great headway, our department heads have made great headway on procurement. Now we need to take another look at land conveyances and any other items that are coming up. So I would really ask anyone, if you're aware of anything, let administration know, we'll track it down. But going forward, there is already a discipline in place to make sure that these things don't fester like they have in the past.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not gonna let this go without making the comment. It's particularly dispiriting about these properties. The same person who identified these properties was also the then-chair of the Affordable Housing Trust and the town administrator, and we were assured that when that Town Meeting action happened, that they were under our control. We've been operating under that assumption, direct assumption, for two years.
Thank you, Don. Okay, moving on to old business discussion, a possible vote to approve the revised Montomoy Regional Agreement Language as presented, and request article to be put on the annual Town Meeting warrant. Today, some questions came up from Selectmen Valentine. Larry, would you just tell the rest of the board what those questions were?
Yeah, when it comes to the, I don't have this, let me just pull up the section, but when it comes to the operating budgets where they're explaining to us, what I asked for was a, an example of how that would look using last year's budget. Because I read all this, when you look at the local contribution, not to exceed local, you know, foundation budgets and all that, it's almost a discussion in the abstract. And I think before I want to move on it, I'd like to specifically understand how that works out. And I think that could be easily done using last year's budget and walk us through that rather than a narrative that is very complex and difficult to understand. I know I asked, mentioned to Joe, and he, even the town administrator said he needed help from the town, from the school to answer that question. I'm reluctant to vote for anything that is too complex to follow.
Thank you, Larry. Mary?
I think that document already exists, Larry. When I was on.
I'm almost positive it does.
When I was on that subcommittee on the, on the school reallocation, I want to say it was in the neighborhood of $500,000 or $600,000 swing, like an improvement in our budget and to the detriment of Chatham. So that, they should have that, Joe, because I, I saw that. Yeah.
But just so we know, I've requested to the school committee chair, that I forwarded Larry's email. She said she could not get it for tonight. The school committee is now aware of it, and they will get it to us. So based on what's in the packet, other than what Larry asked for, is there any further questions from board members so the next time we bring this back, we can actually vote it? Julie?
No, I, I recall, I think it was some.
It was $600,000.
Yeah, somewhere in that vicinity. Right. Yeah.
And to clarify, I'm not so interested in this case. I understand the, the number. I want to see how they arrived at that in a simple walkthrough, because they list criteria, whether it's starting with a foundation budget or local comprehension, and then I want to see, so we can apply that spreadsheet, if you will, to looking at next year and the year after that. Because we're looking at the short term, then we want to have that knowledge to look at long term, whether we look at different evaluations for the town. But I'd be more comfortable if I understood how they derived that for the short term.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall.
It was a spreadsheet with, with various formulas, you know, it wasn't just one number. So I think if they get that sheet, you'll have that, Larry.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mary's well representing us, and she's well familiar with this problem. It's fine that we're doing this, and I have no problems with where we are right now, but there has to be an understanding, doing this for both the regional school board and Chatham, that this is only step one, because it's not a durable solution. People who are six years old now are going to be 16 years old at some point, and if that demographic mix and percentage continues the way it is, it's going to be our school system with a few guest people showing up from another town. So this isn't going to permanently fix the formula.
Right. Thank you. Joe, you have anything to add?
No, just that I'll continue to work with Dr. Carpenter and Michael McMillan, Carol and I, on getting that information as soon as we can.
Okay.
And, and having it be understood, that, to me, that's really the, the heart of it.
So this would be for the second or third meeting in November, if we can have that information by then? And I agree with the other board members, it's a long-term problem.
Yeah.
But this, this, we have to get something on Town Meeting floor this year to get us to the, to get us to the point, because last year's $600,000 budget adjustment from the Town of Chatham was a gift from the Town of Chatham. It was nothing that was, that was voted to change in agreement. They sup, they gave us that money, recognizing there's a problem. So if we want to get into a long-term fix for the six-year-olds that are going to be 60, that's a completely different conversation. And if you want to have that sooner than later, we can have that. I know we directed Town Administrator and Selectman Anderson as, as our designee to that working group to start having conversations again. But we do have to get something before Town Meeting this year, because if, if Town of Chatham doesn't agree to the regional changes, then we need the state to get involved and to make those changes for us. We have to take it to our Town Meeting to get a vote, and they have to take it to their Town Meeting. I'm not so sure their Town Meeting is going to just voluntarily give up $600,000 to a million dollars or whatever it ends up coming to. So we're probably going to end up in a mediation state, I guess, but.
And my input is, is to worry about this Town Meeting right now. The point I was trying to make is, I'd like to understand this, because we need a firm basis if we try to start a long-term discussion in the future.
Right.
Well, Mary's, sorry.
Go ahead.
Mary can follow up on this, but I think that there was sort of round two of the discussion on the elementary level anyway by a committee in Chatham. So I think, you know, we're kind, we, to your point, we shouldn't blend the two, right? That there's other people who've spent some time and effort in looking at what they're looking for, for their time, too. So I'm sure that you'll find more of that in your discussions.
They seemed at least open, they being that subcommittee, and Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought they were pretty open to, we're going to need a future discussion about the middle and the high school. And there's, there's districts out there that have that, that they use a, what do they call it, a equalized property valuation? There's, there's other formulas, so.
Those two Western Mass towns.
They seem to be open. And one question for you, Michael. Do you think the report is sufficient, or do you want Scott Carpenter or Michael here at the, for that discussion?
I think at this point, because we've brought it back this many times, somebody should be here to represent the school.
Yeah.
And the school committee.
I think that'd be good.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to emphasize, I'm not talking about waiting to do everything all at once. Mary's doing what she's doing, and she knows exactly what, you know, the bigger issues are in the future. Totally in for taking what we can do right now, but I just didn't want to let the public, especially in Chatham, be given the impression that, well, we fixed this, the agreement's done, and that, everybody should be happy, and if we come back in two years and try to redesign something, you're going to sound like you guys are never happy over there. There is a bigger problem that eventually needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Joe?
Understood.
Thank you. This one is brought back with the revised Harwich Energy Committee to Harwich Utility and Climate Action Committee with the updated charge. Do we want to vote this tonight?
Who wrote this?
Larry. This is great work.
Why change the commission to committee?
Normally, it's like War and Peace. Normally, they're like War and Peace, this actually is succinct. Well, Ellen did the revisions based on last week's comments, but there was only three, to be fair.
Right.
So can I get a mo, can I get a motion?
I move that we vote to approve the Harwich Energy Committee be changed to the Harwich Utility and Climate Action Committee and update the charge to reflect.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to mention that. I did try to go to the, I'm the liaison to the Energy Committee, and I did try to go and meeting, there was nobody here, I was blocked. So, yeah.
Kind of change.
So in any case, my, my intention was to just have that conversation, and I was not able to have it, so I will reach out to the committee members just to see. I know that, I think Ellen had tried to reach out, and only one person responded. So having said that, I, I think we should, you know, that's why I voted to move forward. I think we need to move.
Well, this does add two, two members, so the interview committee will be getting vacancies. People will be able to apply that are interested in the climate part of this, that weren't in, inclined to go on the energy part of this. So I think we can, I think as the interview committee interviews people, interest will be important. And then Joe's staff will send a letter to the committee members or an email to the committee members notifying them of their additional responsibilities and new charge.
Further than that, you've got the camera. We need people to actually apply for it now that we've changed the charge, and it's got both components in it. And we probably need to update the website to make sure that people know about that also, because we don't have anybody to interview at the moment.
And next week, we will have a vacancy list on the agenda for the public to see a vacancy list. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, Joe. Contracts, Mary, if you want to read.
Motion?
I move that we vote to approve a con, contract with Musco Sports Lighting in the amount of $183,642 for lights at Brooks Park.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, Joe, and I think that checks another box, doesn't it?
You got that right.
Does that resolve Brooks Park Lighting?
I will never say that. It's tremendous progress going forward. Not jinxing us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Thought somebody was going to ask that. One more, one more contract?
I move that we vote to approve a contract extension agreement with Robert B. Our Company for catch basin, basin replacement and drainage infrastructure installation.
Second.
Contract is for unit price work not to exceed $394,200.
Still second. Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, Joe. Town Administrator's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would be remiss if I did not talk about a tremendous, but for some heartbreaking result in that major sporting event last week. Of course, I'm referring to the Montomoy Middle School Kickball Game versus Howard's Chatham Public Safety. It was an amazing athletic display of prowess by both teams, and my daughters require me to say sadly.
Twenty thousand dollars to the family pantry of Cape Cod, so it was a great feeling, and Mary probably knows this, but it equates to 80,000 meals. That's incredible. The pantry does such a crazy, great job, so I just want to say it was a great event.
And I love the pitchers.
Yeah.
Larry?
Nothing.
So I, I have to admit, Joe, when you, when you give your opening statement about your comment, I thought you were going to talk about Town Meeting, a victory to some and a loss for others.
Well, no, but it certainly is somewhat of an athletic endurance event.
I just wanted to extend my thank you to everybody involved in Town Meeting, the Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, Finance Director, in the contract negotiations, as well as the other work. And I know I'm going to miss people. David LeBlanc for the fire, for the ambulance and his explanation as to why. Dan Pelletier, I thought, our Wastewater, Wastewater Commissioner, did an outstanding job. He had his facts lined up. I think he presented the case for the town very well. And, and most of all, this board, and I think people often overlook how much work this board does and how many public meetings we had on those issues that were on Town Meeting floor. And I think it was a, it was a great success, not just for this board, but for the entire Town of Harwich. I think there was an overwhelming support for the articles that we brought forward, which in my minds mean that, my mind means that we educated people and that we were doing the right thing, and we weren't just spending money to spend money. And I think we're moving in the right direction, and I think that the communication that this board has with administration and staff showed at this Town Meeting. It went very, very well, and thankfully, I think everything got passed, and we're moving in the right direction. And I think, you know, the shovel-ready project concept resonated with a lot of people. So I think that we are now aligned to get some of that money if it comes out and save the taxpayers' money, but I, I certainly appreciate myself how much work each board member did to get us to the point where we got. And with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.